Great, well, so welcome, everyone. It is so great to see, to see folks here for our post DA DNC Town Hall. On the recent DNC meeting that was held October 4th to 6th in St. Louis, Missouri. My name is Martha McDevit-Pew. I'm the International Chair for Democrats Abroad, a California voter living in the Netherlands, and it's great to have you here. On the RSV page for this Town Hall, I included links with information about the meeting and a wrap-up article about it from the Dems list, and links also to the livestream for the Women's Caucus event with Vice President Harris, to give you all some background, and so we don't have to explain everything that happened at the meeting, but that we can go in and have a really specific focus today on what's most important for Democrats abroad, and that is what we accomplished at the DNC meeting and the next steps, and how we'll use all the relationships, the conversations, the promises and commitments from the meeting to empower us to win. Because 2024 is and must be top of mind for all of us, our future of our country's at stake. So about this meeting, I want to just run through some slides briefly to explain a little bit about what the DNC is and how we fit into it. At this meeting, our full delegation was present, which was really terrific. We have a great delegation of eight DNC members, and Joe Smallhoover wasn't physically present, but was able to participate remotely. And again, we have a really terrific, diverse team who really do the work, who fan out at these meetings to have the conversations with all of our partners in the states and constituency caucuses. So Angela, if you would put those slides up, I will walk through some points about the DNC. So slide number one. Well, the next slide, that's the cover slide. These are our 2020 to 24 DNC members. Myself and Steve Nardi, who's here today from Canada, our International Vice Chair, and then we have three globally elected DNC representatives, Adrian George, Joe Smallhoover, and Julia Bryant, and three that are regionally directed. So Miguel Madrigal in the Americas, Koi Lemka in South Korea, and Katie Solon, who's representing EMEA. So those are the names, and that's who we are. Next slide. Great. So just in a bird's eye view of the DNC. DNC meetings that we attend are really working meetings, which have a very special function for Democrats abroad, because we work with all states and we are creating partnerships at DNC meetings. So just a little view of what the DNC is. The DNC is the name for the Democratic Party. There are nine officers in the DNC, which is headed by the Chair, Jamie Harrison, and other elected officers. There are about 475 voting members in the DNC, and that's where the DA has our own voting members who play a role. And we are special. In another way, we have eight DNC members each who have half a vote, and that having those eight members allows us to build relationships across all the 50-plus-one states at the DNC. The DNC is also managed by its own staff, and the DNC has standing committees. So Budget and Finance, Credentials, Resolutions, Rules and Bylaws, and an Executive Committee. And for DA, Adrian George, who votes, who lives in Sweden and votes in DC, is a member of the Credentials Committee. So that is our one DNC member who is on a committee. Next slide. So the DNC is also has a number of constituency, regional, and issues-related caucuses and councils. Those are all mentioned here. And of course, our job as eight DNC members is to fan out and participate in those caucuses and councils as much as possible. Caucuses at the DNC are intended for people who have the immutable characteristics of a caucus. Therefore, we're really pleased to now have a representative on the Hispanic Caucus, which is Miguel Madrigal out of Costa Rica, and also Koi Lemka on the AAPI Caucus. Adrian George in the Black Caucus, myself on the LGBTQ Caucus, and of course, the women in our delegation are part of the Women's Caucus. So these are the caucuses, as well as the regional orientation of the DNC, so that we're all allocated into the four different regions of the Democratic Party. And there, again, we distribute ourselves across those. So we have representatives in East, West, North, and South. As far as having leadership roles on those caucuses, I'm on the LGBTQ Caucus Board, and Katie is a member-at-large on the Western Caucus Board. At the DNC, there's also a number of councils. I think you all are probably familiar with a number of those. There's an Ethnic Council, a Labor Council, you know, the others that are mentioned here, Seniors, which our own Seniors Caucus works with, the Environmental and Climate Crisis, the same story, and a Youth Council, as well as a number of others. So those are councils at the DNC. And the DNC is the determinant of the rules for the Democratic Party's presidential nominating process and its national convention every four years, which we have coming up next year. So of course, our own delegate selection plan or our global primary are part of that process of nominating a president, and we're also governed by that. So that is a bird's eye view of the DNC. But I just wanted to visualize for folks today. There we go. Yeah, so that's our delegation. You know, again, Adrian wasn't in the group picture, but she's there as the Secretary of the Midwest Caucus. And Katie's also serving on the Western Caucus, and we have a picture with Ken Martin. And it was also really delightful to have our former Chair, Candace Keriston, who was at the DNC meeting as a vendor together with us. And so Miguel Madrigal got us together for a picture, which he calls "The Table and the Four Chairs." So it was really lovely to be able to be together. There's lots of other photos. You may have seen some of those come along on Facebook. I just wanted to give a visual representation. The other thing I wanted to mention is that these meetings are open to the public. There may be a few sessions that are not open to the public during the meeting, and that really depends on the nature of the topics that are being discussed, and really, you know, to facilitate some of the difficult conversations that we've had to have from time to time. But mostly, all of the sessions are open to the public, and if you ever want to go to a DNC meeting, you know, you can participate in that way. Not a lot of the sessions are going to be recorded and livestreamed and so forth, but it is a really great place to get a sense of what happens in the Democratic Party, to meet people of the Democratic Party. And we did have some of our DNC, our Democrats abroad, excuse me, leaders who are participating in that by this time. So that's really a great way to participate. My first DNC meeting was just as a regular Democrats Abroad member, who was, you know, up to some work that I wanted to get accomplished. So I came to a DNC meeting in 2007, and I guess I would say the rest is history. I'm still here. So again, today I wanted to focus on what we got accomplished at the meeting and the relationships that we built and the agreements that we made to work together. You know, of course, Adrian, on the Credentials Committee, she has her own work to do also as Secretary of the Midwest Caucus, along with Katie, who's on the Western Caucus. There's a lot of specific activities that they can talk about that are related to that work. But really, there was a lot of opportunity in this meeting with so many hundreds of people getting together for us to really create our work over the coming year. This is the last DNC meeting in this cycle. So the next time that we will all get together will be at the Democratic National Convention in August 2024. After that, the newly-elected DNC members will be at the first meeting. That will be at the conclusion of the convention. So that was, that was kind of special and maybe a little bittersweet, because it's so wonderful when we're able to get together with the representatives from all of the states. And there is often a winter meeting, but not in presidential years, so we won't be seeing each other again for a while. So it was really an opportunity to have the conversations that we need to have for Democrats abroad to get our work done going forward. So I want to go around with our DNC members who are able to attend today and give each of them the opportunity to talk for five minutes about what they accomplished at the meeting. But I think also, most importantly, what are some of the next steps that we have? We're entering into a really important election year, and what are the opportunities and steps that we can take and that we will be taking to follow up on the work that was initiated at this last DNC meeting? And I'll just start out by naming a couple of things myself that are, that were great opportunities and takeaways for me. We had a conversation with Minion Moore, who is the Chair of the Democratic National Convention next year. And she came up to us and asked us to work with her to highlight Democrats abroad more at the convention itself, gave us her phone number. Just an example of the kind of work we do, the connections we make. And of course, there's, it's really terrific to be able to work with her, to find how we can really highlight the words of Democrats abroad at the convention, because there's a lot of awareness at the Democratic Party right now about how close elections have become. That dovetails really nicely with our story, which is that we're the margin of victory. And so there's a great awareness of how important the votes abroad can potentially be in elections in the coming cycle. So that was one follow-up that came out of the meeting. I think the other one I really want to mention is just all the meetings that we had with state chairs and executive directors about how we can work together. We were able to meet with, I would say, about a third of those state parties at the DNC meeting and with many of the others during the ASDC meeting that took place right before the DNC meeting, and continue to follow up, because of course, we meet more often. As a Chair and Vice Chair at the ASDC, we have four meetings a year. We'll be meeting again in San Diego in January. Those relationships with state parties, that's really what a lot of it is about for Democrats abroad. Those are our partners. I think they have a sense now, many of them, that we are their partners, that we may not be on their radar every day. It's really important for us to build those relationships. But one of the key questions there for me was to ask those state chairs, vice chairs, and executive directors, what do you see as the, what are the unique opportunities in your state where Democrats abroad can make a difference? And who can we best work within your state? So one of the examples I had, I met with Daniela Moore Moreno, who's the Chair of the party in Nevada. Now, that's a battleground state this coming year, and they've got a very important Senate race. And when she understood recently that there were a lot of ballots that were returned to send her for insufficient postage out of Clark County in Nevada, she realized that that potentially could have changed the outcome of the election and that by Democrats abroad staying on top of voter protection issues like that, we really can be an excellent partner. So when I sat down with her, she said, "I want to leave no stone unturned." And we really had a look together at what could happen. And then I said to her, "You're a very busy woman. Who can I work with in your team?" And so those are the kind of relationships that we have and that we will continue to have going through into 2024. So those are a couple that I wanted to highlight in particular. We also had an ask from a couple of states for us to help them out, and we've had another ask that came through from the DNC itself. There are, of course, some very important elections this November. The elections in Virginia are expected to be extremely close, and the DNC has asked us how we can help in Virginia. We also had an ask from Mississippi, where there's a potential to elect a Democratic governor, which is also would be incredibly exciting if we can do that, and that looks really within the realm of possibility. Ohio has a very important vote around abortion rights on the ballot and so forth. So we are going to be sharing with our volunteers soon some opportunities that they have, that we have, to phone-bank into those states and help get out the vote there. So those are, again, follow-up that are requested from states and places that we can help out. We also are continuing our conversations with the Biden campaign. I met with Quentin Fulks, who's the Deputy Campaign Manager there, who's very eager to help us out in a number of different ways, including with any surrogates that we need for meetings. So that's, I think, really good news. And then we also had a full day of meetings with the ASDC, with the Association of State Parties. And they have a new person who's now in charge of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we're in conversations about how we can use some of the assets that are available there going forward. So I'll stop there, because there's a lot more to mention, but I think that gives you a flavor of some of the opportunities and follow-up. And I would like to hand over next to Vice Chair Steve Nardi, if he's willing to go next.
Okay. Good morning, or afternoon, evening. I'm not sure what it is right now. It was my first DNC meeting. One of the things that I did notice is I have to improve my alcohol consumption skills, because they have weakened, apparently, compared to what goes on there. But it was a great week. I was able to strengthen some connections that I had made at ASDC in Minneapolis, now having a few months in office and some clearer pictures of the opportunities that existed. So I've got conversations to continue. We talked with Lavora Barnes from Michigan and their Executive Director about opportunities on a global level, as well as her neighbor to the north. And Ken Martin is coming to Canada to do a global fundraiser. And we're looking at Windsor as a starting point and bringing Lavora over to really get her to try to, you know, get connected to the potential of the Michigan voters that's outside her back door. The Chair and Vice Chair of Missouri had a conversation with them. They want to talk to us about opportunities they believe exist specifically around Fort Leonard and reaching overseas service members that they want to have a conversation with us about. Vermont wants to have a conversation with us about co-hosting the first ASDC meeting outside of the US in Quebec. So they're eager to move forward in that direction. US Virgin Islands is interesting, connecting with our Transnational Country Committee, the Caribbean Islands Group. They have some connections on some of the country islands that's in their membership, and have raised their hand to get engaged. And then I spent a fair bit of time with vendors, looking at any opportunities that presented DA a chance to look at new ways of reaching the voters that we haven't connected with. Then there's some exciting technology out there. And one of the vendors was a recommendation from the ASDC that they wanted us to talk with. So we need to continue those conversations as well. And I need to follow up with Donna Brazil, who has offered to meet with our country committees as she travels around for the Fulbright Scholarship, and said that there were other people within the organization that she said would also be interested. So we're going to continue that conversation. So it was a long day, long days, and a lot of people to meet, but very energizing, very motivating. And I'm going to take the opportunity here, and I hope you will appreciate this and the humor in them saying this, but one of the surprises that I had put was the rare opportunity to meet a DNC member that Miguel had not met yet. The man was a networker extraordinaire. But yeah, it was a great experience for the first meeting.
Great. Thank you so much, so much. Steve? So just going down the list of our other DNC members. I know Adrian had a scheduling conflict. I don't know if she'll drop in later, but she's not here right now. So I'm just going alphabetically down the list. Let's go Julia, and then Katie, and then Miguel.
Great. And can you guys hear me now? Is it okay?
Yes.
So, well, it was a great meeting, and you know, one of these meetings, you start like at seven and you go until maybe one. So it's, they are long days, but they're really so fun and energizing. And I thought it was wonderful that we were able to start the whole, kick off the whole meeting at the Environmental Caucus. And you know, Michelle Dietrich is such a good friend of ours. She was really so kind and very gracious and welcoming to everybody. And I really thought it was a wonderful way to kick it off, because, you know, I think environmental crisis was the number-one theme that you heard almost everywhere we went. Vice President Harris mentioned it too. That was the first thing she mentioned, and it was something that everyone was talking about. And that was really good to hear from someone coming from, you know, abroad and going back to the United States and just wondering what was top of mind. And so I just want to make sure y'all are aware how important that is to people in the United States right now. And then we, the next meetings that I really, that I had that were in the Southern Caucus region. And so we, as Martha said, we all caucus in different groups. I'm in the Southern Caucus. It was, I was really warmly welcomed back into the caucus. And in fact, I was asked to nominate the person for the executive position, because they said, you know, Julia, you really represent all of us, and so we would really like you to nominate this person. And, you know, that just gives an example of how the DNC views us now. They really realize that we represent everybody, and so they asked me to do that. And as a result, you know, we now have a nice relationship with one of the big fundraisers for Andy Beshear's race in Kentucky. And the guy, you know, Andy Beshear is also in a really important race, and they're very hopeful that he can win again, and I think that's another important focus for us. The South has so many interesting races right now in Virginia, Mississippi, Kentucky. Everyone's talking about this. The other amazing news from that meeting was an opportunity I had to sit down with the Texas Chair and his team. And after, you know, we, within, for each of our regional caucuses, we all stood up and presented on Democrats abroad. And we all talked about opportunities to work together and asked everybody to think about how they can work with us and continue the conversation. Texas got so excited that during our conversation, they said, "Julia, put together a proposal for us. We'd be so interested in doing outreach across the border and helping you guys with an organizer, and we are following up with that." And I think it's a really exciting opportunity to work with a huge state party like Texas and do this outreach. Get, have them help us fundraise for this organizer and start that work. So that's one of the exciting takeaways that I'm working on right now. I also talked a lot with people from different states that have tight races, like Montana, for example, where I was working with Donovan Hawke. He and I were brainstorming on what we could do to get out the vote more among military, especially in the Native American populations. And so we had that conversation, also had a conversation in Wisconsin about the very same thing. So, you know, people are really thinking creatively, and one of the things we're really trying to do is think, how can we build on what other teams are doing? So it's not a lot of effort, extra effort for them, but their message is expanding just a little bit. And the other thing I really was working on is making sure that people who have needs and interest, they have donor pools that we can reach out to. And that's one of the things that we were brainstorming quite a lot with different folks about that, and I'm going to continue and follow up on those as well. I also wanted to, one other thing that was really fun is that, you know, as people are leaving, I was like, "Okay, what would happen if we, you know, we start inviting people to, you know, ask them, when are their next traveling abroad?" Because DNC members travel outside the United States quite a lot. And we knew that, you know, like, for example, Yvette Williams from Maryland, she just had a wonderful visit in Portugal. So as we were in the airport and meeting people, I ran into the Vice Chair from the AAPI Caucus. And I was like, "Ada, when are you next traveling abroad?" And he's like, "I'm going to Barcelona in this month." And I was like, "Oh, well, then you need to come and meet with us." And he's going to be attending our reception in Barcelona this week, which is so fun. The head of the Labor Council, Stuart Applebaum, is going to be in Amsterdam next, this November. He's going to be meeting with Martha. We, the head of the Disability Caucus, same thing, she's going to be meeting with us. And so, you know, we were able to extend that invitation to so many people who said, "Oh, yes, that's a good idea. Would you, I didn't realize that you would be interested in meeting with me." And by making sure that's top of their mind and setting up concrete dates, we're able to really make sure that the DNC is thinking about us and we become real in their mind. Because I know that that's what happens when people actually meet with our teams. They just, they expand their thinking beyond our eight members in the DNC to these wonderful groups all around the world. So I think that's my, my feedback. And the only other thing I would say is that, again, it's so much, I would really encourage you to come to these meetings. They're great. The more the merrier, because, you know, one of the last things I heard as I was in the airport about to board was from the Labor Council team. And they said, "You know, Democrats abroad, your DNC members are known for being so excited and so enthusiastic and everywhere." I was like, "That's what we want to do." And so that's, that was a great way to leave that meeting and end on a really super-duper high note. Over to, back to you, Martha.
Great. Thanks, Julia, for those highlights. You know, I'll also mention that while we're in St. Louis, we were in the 30-day window in which we had received comments from the DNC on our delegate selection plan. We received about four and a half pages of comments, questions, and omissions. And you probably had heard that we got conditional approval of our delegate selection plan, but we had those extra items to tick off. So of course, being in the same room with folks in the DNC, and Julia was able to actually take care of some of that on her plane trip home. But really, these face-to-face meetings are really so important in terms of being able to discuss and walk through some of the questions that people have. Our delegate selection is slightly different from some other states, and so it's really good to be able to explain that. Also with Frank Leon, who's on the Rules and Bylaws Committee, he got a good understanding of how we do things, which is really helping us in terms of answering those questions and getting approval for our delegate selection plan. So that's just another thing that happened in between everything else. So go ahead, Katie. Take it away.
Thanks. Well, I guess something that always stands out in my head when I attend these meetings and I have attended them is how, what an honor and a privilege it is to be there on behalf of all of you that are on this call or maybe watching later, because we have the presence that we have there because of the work that you do, because the work that Democrats abroad has done. So we're really building on a foundation of our numbers improving over the last cycles on what happened the last two years in particular, where we got that $300,000 contribution support from the DNC, plus the number of staff members, plus the promise to continue. So we know that when we're there, we're representing you, we're there based on your work and based on what's come before us. So the challenge is really to use these short conversations that we have, these photo opportunities, and turn that into real working relationships in our core work, helping the state parties in particular in their core work. So looking at a couple of takeaways from the caucuses that I attended. Of course, the Small Business Council is really shouting out AP, since they did an event that the now newly-elected Chair of that council from California was in Japan lately, made contacts there through us, through the DNC members, and then did a Zoom event on small business. And they want to do more of them, and they want to do them around the world, and they want to help support us in our efforts to change laws and change regulations for taxes and for small business owners overseas. So that was really, you know, that's been a welcome relationship that seems to be growing. The high school Dems reached out to us. They have reached out to us. You know, that Candace has served as the Vice Chair of the Youth Council. They want to establish high school democratic groups all around the world. This is terribly exciting, except for the fact that they want to make this a non-citizenship-based organization. And I think we really need to get back to them and say, "We want to help as long as you're targeting US citizens, because those are the voters that we're going to be going after." Otherwise, I don't know what kind of organization will be. The Seniors Caucus, we had a question asked to one of the guest speakers, Ramsey Reed. He's the State Director for the DNC about their plans, as they were talking about their plans for all the state parties for DA. And he came right back at answering that question with full information about what they have done to support us in the recent past and what their plans are. So it was really very encouraging to see that we were on their screen with really specific figures and numbers. But then I'm going to get to the Western Caucus, which is my home. It is the caucus that I have voted in four of the states in that caucus, and I've lived in several others. So I feel very much at home there. I am on the Executive Committee. But I don't know if all roads to the White House and keeping the Senate and taking back the House go through the West, but certainly a number of them do. And there are so many critical races and issues that will be on the ballot in '24. The state parties and the candidates are beginning to really learn what Democrats abroad can do to help them in these close races. So we know Arizona's got it on the federal and state levels. It's getting rid of Sinema, getting in Ruben Gallego. But there's three congressional races that are really key. There's one that we will keep. They have a tough primary, a very spirited contested primary for Ruben's seat in the Congress. But there are two others that we lost by less than one point in 2022. We can get them back. We can help California to take back those congressional seats that they lost. Nevada's got an abortion issue that will bring out the voters, as does Arizona. We're fighting right now to get that on the ballot for 2024. We know that Tester in Montana, his race always is close. We know that the overseas vote put him over the top the first time he won. He knows that, too. Montana should know that, so we should be working with Montana. But there are really critical, close races that are coming up in the Western Caucus. And there are state parties and candidates, as the law allows, that want to work with us. Connected to this, of course, is the Native Caucus, because so many of our Native American tribal members live in the West. And their vote has become increasingly visible and really important in some states. There are 400,000 Navajos spread across Arizona and New Mexico, and they turned out like never before in Arizona. And we like to take credit for Biden's win in 2020 there and for Katie Hobbs and Adrian Fontes and Chris Mays winning the winning the top three state jobs last year. Well, the Navajo vote was like never before as well. So watching the kind of organizing that they are doing to mobilize and train youth, to bring out the matriarchs in the tribes, to also do voter registration and GOTV, and to do year-round work is really something that we can be motivated by and that we can help with and that we can, as Julia says, we can add on to what they're doing. But a really important point, I think, in this community and the swing states is the relational organizing that everyone is focusing on. There are new tools that they introduced at this DNC meeting. There's a great article in the Washington Post a couple of days ago about Wisconsin and Arizona, where they are going to kick off this use of relational organizing. And this is a place where when you're reaching out to people that you know to get them to vote, we can ask people in the United States to reach out to their friends and family and colleagues overseas or to reach out to their people in the US, asking them to reach out overseas. So this is really a place where we can, if we can get our messages to the state parties and the candidates, we can really show an increase in the vote exactly where we need it. And I don't know how much time I probably don't have left, but I'll just end with two quotes. One from Jamie Harrison, which he repeated because we see him a number of times in a number of different rooms at these meetings. And that is, you cannot wring your hands and roll up your sleeves at the same time. So it's really time for us to be rolling our sleeves up and getting down to it. And Kamala, in the wonderful Women's Caucus meeting where she spoke with us, she, you know, reiterated that democracy is just as strong as we are willing to fight for it. So good thing coming out of this meeting is the relationships, the focus on the work, and also just the motivation to do the work. And it's ahead of us. So let's go. Back to you, Martha.
Thank you so much, Katie. There's certainly a lot of work for you and all of us to do in the West. So thanks for highlighting where the opportunities are. And I think the next, the next piece of that is finding the next step. Thanks for that.
Yeah.
Miguel? Whoops, you're on mute, Katie, if you're talking to us.
If I could add one thing, I think for the West and for a lot of these other swing districts, is the whole intent to return and full ballot. It is such an issue in many Western states and some of the others where it's close. And this is also a time for us to be working with state parties and candidates to make sure they know what the rules are in their state, what people need to do, what the consequences are, and what people need to do to get a full ballot. And then in those places where we can, although it's getting late, coming into a presidential year, to either to adjust the rules. So in Arizona, for instance, we have a friendly Secretary of State. We need to be working with that office to see if they can push the boundaries to send full ballots to as many voters as possible. And that needs to be part of our message in Democrats abroad is what the difference is between full and federal ballots are and what the consequences are of these really critical state and local races. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Katie. And thanks especially for highlighting how important it is for us to have leaders like yourself on the boards in some of these regions, both you and Adrian are on the boards in, in a region. And all the opportunity that opens up for you to be able to do that work with those states, to make sure that they're educated in that and to bring all of our state teams into that. That's really terrific. There's certainly a lot that we could be doing there. And, and it's so important. So thanks for that. And so next I will go over to Miguel. And that was a nice segue from Katie mentioning the high school Democrats. I know Miguel and I have been talking about that as well. So take it away, Miguel.
I actually have a presentation which Angela will, Angela will show to, to all of you. Angela? If you can make it full screen.
We had a little, before you got on, Miguel, we had a little bit of an issue with the PowerPoints on the WebEx. So she'll, I think, try again, but we were having a little bit difficulty with paging through some of the presentations. So let's see if this one works. We can see the first slide. So that's great.
Yeah, but, okay, well, if, I don't want, I don't want the slides, the slides on the, on the left to distract you or spoil the rest. You know, I like sprinkling in surprises in the presentation. So if you could just, if you can make it full screen, that would be great. If you can, that's okay. So we went, we attended the Fall DNC Meeting, October 5th through 7th. I arrived there on the first. I, I came, I came ready, I came prepared and I came energized. So if you go to the next slide.
Do you see the slides?
I can see the, I can see the.
They're not changing again, unfortunately.
Yeah. Slide number.
Yeah. It wasn't in slideshow view. It was just like it was in the working view.
One more time, this time with feeling.
Angela, are you sharing your screen or are you uploading the file into WebEx?
I am sharing my screen.
Because uploading the file into WebEx sometimes makes it then easier to manipulate when you're in there.
Yeah, that's true, but I didn't receive it as a PDF. I received it as a.
Sorry.
Sorry. Just one second.
Next time.
Well, you can just, if you're in PowerPoint, you can just export it as a PDF.
Yes.
There you go. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so there was a vacancy on the DNC. Our great, great Ken Sherman, which we all love, decided to step down and I decided to run for his seat. So I ran and that's my campaign poster. And if you go to the next slide.
Yeah, it's a little, it's, it's just a little bit weird. Hold on, I'm going to have to share every page singularly. Sorry. It just sucks.
Well, in the meantime, I, 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 I am very thankful. And I don't know if you have people here other than Key and Steve, Nardi and Steve Johnson, but the people of the American continent selected me as their DNC member for the rest of Ken's turn. Art Shankler says Ken turned 87 yesterday. So happy birthday, Ken, if you're watching this. But the people of the American continent elected me to, to this position. So as soon as I got elected, I started, you know, getting ready for this important, very important meeting. And the pictures that you will be seeing will be there, were taken chronologically. So if you go to the next slide, you will see me getting ready for the, for the meeting. I was so pumped, so excited, getting on my jacket and my, and just, just, just being there was, I think it's, it's just, I will, I will say it's magical. Being with, being with all the people. Oh, so this is a picture on day one. Oh, it's actually day zero because the meeting hadn't officially started yet. But I was, I was at, I was in the street and I said, oh my God, aren't you, aren't you Jason Ray? And aren't you David Glidden? So I, I, they stood, they stood right there and I started talking to them. And this was day zero. This had, the meeting hadn't officially started. So Martha and Steve were there. And they were laughing because they, 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 they were, I don't, I don't know if they were impressed. You, you will tell us, Martha, if you were impressed or not. But, you know, just being able to recognize people I've seen on TV for so many years and saying, oh my God, aren't you, aren't you this person? So it was pretty surreal just to see all of these Democrats, these Democratic VIPs walking down the street and to know they're real people and they talk like you, they eat like you, they drink like you, ask Ken Martin. But this is, this is, this is just pretty surreal. So I, I got to have, I had, we had a very nice conversation with Jason Ray, who's a secretary, which I did not know this, by the way. He was the youngest person elected to the DNC. He was elected in 2004 at the age of 17. So there you go, youth. He's not 17 anymore. But he is definitely very active and he's now the secretary. And David Glidden, who is also a young party leader, he is a social worker and, and he, actually, for the Youth Caucus, next month, we will be having a, a meeting, a panel. And I formally invited David Glidden of Vermont to, to show up. So that's, that's a positive conversation we have there. If you can do the next slide. In the meantime, I will tell you that I did meet with high school Democrats of America. So there I am, getting ready for the meeting, very excited, very pumped. That's in my Airbnb right next to the hotel. So yeah. If you go to the next slide. But I, I did, I do, I do want to say that I get, they had the chance to meet the high school Democrats of America. And when I met them, I told them that, you know, Democrats abroad, sometimes you have to, so that's, here I am with Donna Brazil. She's fantastic. She is such a great person. She was energized. She was happy to be there. I was also happy to be there. But at one, at one point, the, the Chair of the Wyoming State Democratic Party, he sat on the piano and he started playing Uptown Girl by Billy Joel. And everybody was, was just dancing, including, so, you know, I can't say this every day, but I had the chance to dance with Donna Brazil to the upbeat tune of Uptown Girl. So there you go. That, that's at the, at the reception. And at the reception, I had that amazing opportunity. We rarely get the chance to have several chairs, former chairs of Democrats abroad at the same time, at the same place. So I said, hey, let's take, let's all, let's all take a picture. So I took a picture of the four chairs. The four chairs, we were just missing a table there, but we, somebody get us a table because we were surrounded by four chairs. Katie, Julia, Candace and Martha. I was so happy to be with all of you there. And if you can see at the background over, right, right on the left, Adrian George is sitting down at, at, in the table right there. So we even got Adrian in the picture. Look at that. So I think this is an amazing picture. And it shows the strength of our party and, I don't know, and Hess is here, but the strength of the Women's Caucus in this party. Our last four chairs have all been women. And I think this is, this speaks volumes to the rest of the DNC that our female leadership is strong and it's continued to go. And I'm very happy to be just part of this, this amazing group of people. So, yeah. Joe Smallhoover, yes, Joe Smallhoover is a former chair, was also with us virtually. And I don't know if he's, if he's with us today or right now. I don't see him, but, so hi, Joe, if you're watching this. The next slide, and we'll, we'll try to, try to do this. I don't know if I'm, I'm tiring you, but about this, but here I am. The picture is very blurry. But I, I got to meet, she was riding the escalator down to the convention place. And I said, oh my God, isn't that Gretchen Whitmer? And she said, yes, yes, I am. So I ran down the stairs and Julia was there to see it. I ran down the stairs to get, get to meet her. And it was amazing to just, you know, just mingle with the governor of Michigan, right? So I, you know, at several times during the, the meeting, I got, I got starstruck. I really was starstruck about, you know, seeing all these people and getting to meet them. So she, she was there. She was extremely nice with us. I think Steve Nardi also has a picture with, with, with Gretchen Whitmer. So I don't know if we'll, we'll share that eventually, but it's on Facebook. Then I, here's the picture with, with Jamie. I love Jamie Harrison. Jamie Harrison is, we stand with Jamie Harrison because Jamie Harrison stands with us. He supports Democrats abroad. He is extremely happy we're there. And he actually, Jamie Harrison actually knows me now personally at the personal level. So that's, that's great. And I, I think he, he, he recognizes and values the importance of the vote form on that. He knows we are the margin of victory. And I pitched up to him and I think he already knew that. But he, you know, extremely nice to us and I, I'm, I am happy that he is Chair of the DNC right now. So yeah, next picture. So here I am. So Kamala Harris actually got to address us. This is at the Women's Caucus and Kamala Harris is in the background. And there, there is me. This is a coincidence I could get to Kamala Harris. So good. But Martha actually got to meet Kamala Harris. And I think that, I don't know if Martha already mentioned that, but it's, it's a surreal experience getting to know the Vice President of the United States. And, and she knows who we are and she knows what we do. And she really, really thanked us for, for doing this. So I, I am happy that Kamala Harris got to speak with us and she got to, you know, pump up the room. And it was surreal to just see her there.
Miguel, we're running a little bit short on time and I do want to get to questions. If you could maybe just wind up with some.
Yeah, let's, Angela, if you could just, just go get the pictures. Here we are with Barbara Lee and, you know, we were, she was there with us. So, so that was very nice. Liz from China was also there. This is at the Hispanic Caucus Breakfast. And they gave us little flags to show where heritage is from. Here, I'm holding Puerto Rico flag. Yeah, another picture. Fox News was there. So I took a picture with the Fox News microphone. That was pretty funny. Next. Oops. Okay, um, here I am with Martha at the, at the Gateway Arts. So that was like the highlight of the, of the trip, you know, seeing this beautiful art at Golden Hours was just something else. And last thing, last but not least, and this, this adds a little story. Here I am, this, this seems like the random picture, but I was sitting having some ice cream at Ted Drew's, Ted Drew's frozen custard. And I'm sitting down, I sat down, I was eating my ice cream and this woman starts, you know, there was no, there were no other benches available. So she, she had to sit down, she had to sit down right, right next to me. So she sits down and I started talking to her. And this is a random woman I, I don't know. And, you know, hey, you know, my name is Miguel, where are you from? Oh yeah, I live in Portugal. Really? Have you ever heard of Democrats abroad? Yeah, of course. I'm, I'm a member of Democrats abroad in Portugal. So even in a random bench at an ice cream place in the middle of St. Louis, Missouri, you will find Democrats abroad members. So we are everywhere. And so I just wanted to end with this. You know, we are everywhere. And yeah, that, that's the picture of the Gateway Arts. So thank you for listening to me and I'll see you soon. Thanks.
Thanks, Miguel. And also thanks for coming early to the DNC meeting. I think that actually was, was, was pretty valuable that you had already gotten there a couple of days in advance. And, and literally you were introducing us to people. I mean, I've been on the DNC for seven years. There's always new people at a DNC meeting, new members of the DNC. But you were, you know, before the meeting started already making introductions and as you already pointed out, meeting some of the key people in the DNC wherever they were. So thanks for being somebody who really helped us expand our network. Really appreciate it. So I think that is the round of the DNC members. And the next thing I'd like to do is open it up to any questions that anybody has around this DNC meeting. Again, I want to really focus on the future and what are our next steps? What are we up to? What can we accomplish? How can we really use this relationship we have, the connections we have inside of the Democratic Party to further our work, but also to really be the partner. We can want to do a lot of stuff in different states, but those state parties, they need to want it to and they need to work with us. So those partnerships are really essential.
So we have a first question is from Bill.
Great. Thanks, Bill. Go ahead.
You're on mute, Bill.
I just wanted to ask each of the delegates, which particular issue are you pushing? Is there something that you think, based on your interest and character, that you want the, the rest of the DNC members to know about and act on?
Well, certainly I'd like them to know that we're going to bring in the votes in their states and that we can help them. I'm working on voting, among many other things, Bill. Anybody else like to take a shot at that?
Yeah, my answer is going to be the same, Bill. I think all of the issues that we care about in Democrats abroad and that we're ready to fight for, we can't make anything happen on any of these issues unless we elect good people at every level. So I think the issue that I want to come from the DNC and go to the DNC with is turnout, voter turnout, reaching more overseas voters, getting ballots in their hands and making sure they get them back. Thanks.
And I'd say, of course, on top of that, of course, the voting is, that's the number one thing that we ask them. But we also talk about voter protection. I think we all were reaching out to our, to the different states and saying, you know, how can we protect our vote? How can we expand the vote? And, you know, we had a great conversation with Georgia, for example, who's in the process of hiring a new voter protection person. They have a new ED and they're like, you guys are going to be one of the first people we call after we get that voter protection director elected. And that, I think that's so important for us all to be really thinking about.
I just wanted to say that the youth vote, you know, I think it's really important. At the Youth Council, it was the smallest meeting I attended during DNC. And Katie was there to, she was there at the, at the Youth Council. It was a small meeting. It was like, what? It was a small meeting. It was like, what, twenty people, uh, or twenty-five people? In the other meetings, we had fifty, sixty people. So I, I will say that youth, you, the youth vote and getting out those young voters, and especially as Youth Caucus Chair of Democrats Abroad, I, uh, I do think that getting out, uh, the youth vote will be extremely important for twenty twenty-four and beyond.
Thanks, folks.
Uh, our next question is from Art.
I, yeah, I guess a couple of things about the DSP. Uh, I know the, the, uh, I see Julia nodding, gearing up. Um, you know, they, they rejected our, uh, whatever's plan to have ranked choice voting. And they rejected enough, that of a number of other states. I don't quite understand why in our case, but, um, just wondering whether you had a chance to meet with some of those other states and discuss the issue. And the second thing is, I don't know whether you can say, but other than ranked choice voting, what was the gist of, uh, their comments, questions, et cetera, et cetera. But maybe that's better for another meeting.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Art, for those questions. Yeah, I think it was a principle, the choice, um, to do ranked choice voting. Um, the DNC was only allowing states that had done that in the past to do ranked choice voting in this election. So any state that hadn't done that, unless there was a requirement, um, but the law in that state, they were not being allowed to do ranked choice voting. So we fell under that. So it really wasn't anything about us. It was a decision of the DNC. Uh, and what was your second question again?
Other, yeah, that's, I asked whether you had talked with any other states who had also been rejected, but it's-
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but the other part was, what were the other, what's the gist of the other comments, questions that they had?
Yeah, you know, I think each time there's different staff at the DNC who are, who are overseeing this. So some, so they just also have a big concern around cybersecurity in general at the DNC right now. So there were some just questions about, you know, walking them through, what is our, you know, how do we do this? How do we actually do a global primary, which is dispersed over so many different countries? Um, you know, what kinds of methods and mechanisms are we using? So they really needed to be walked through a number of things. Um, and they had questions around how exactly we achieve the proportionality, um, wanting to make sure that we weren't using, uh, uh, weighing the votes in a certain way that was in violation of one person, one vote. But they wanted to understand exactly how we, how we calculate that and how we ensure that every single country committee has a vote in delegate selection when we do that. So those were just a lot of clarifications that we had to do. They also wanted more information on our voter protection programs, noted that we had a very strong program in twenty twenty, but again, they just wanted more evidence of it. And then there was another topic that only applied to Democrats abroad and the territories. Uh, was mentioned in the comments. I think it might have also been mentioned in the Rules and Bylaws Committee. They wanted to see us demonstrate that we were financially and organizationally capable of running a primary. So I think in geographic states, um, you know, that's a process that's well established. They really wanted to understand whether we had the means to do that. So we had to share with them some of our processes um, and show some of the budgets for some of our work so that they could see that we're actually able to carry this off. So again, new staff, um, and they wanted to walk through stuff. Um, Julia, did you have anything to add? Cause I know you were in deep conversation, um, on your plane trip.
Yeah. So, I mean, one of the things they hadn't realized is that we use ranked choice voting, um, because as Martha said, uh, there are new staffers. They, that we hadn't used ranked choice voting in our delegate selection last time. When we, I walked them through in detail how we used it and how we ran it. And, um, they were, they said, oh, that's wonderful. And they moved on from there. And, um, I think they were also, um, you know, we just went down through the list of, of points that were open. Uh, the staffer was, uh, is working with Frank Leoni closely on that DSP. And so, uh, we were able to just like kind of check off each point that she was concerned about. And I, and the only other thing that really comes to mind, the DNC elections were something that, uh, came up. And then also, um, as Martha said, they don't like the language weighted voting. So we all agreed to use, um, different language around, around it, you know, which is fine. But, um, I, I think, you know, if, if that's, if they don't want weighted voting, we could call it voter values and move on. So, um, you know, I think it was just, it was a lot of just clarification, giving them the sense that, yes, we've done these before. She, you know, she, she was new to us. And so, uh, it just really just, I, I always think putting a face to a name and making sure people understand, um, that we've done this before. And how many, um, votes we actually handled last time in, in, um, in twenty sixteen, that was really reassuring for her as well.
Thanks, Julia. Katie, Katie's next in the queue and then Steve.
Yeah, just to put it in context, Art, and I think you probably know this too, most of the states got conditional approval. There were only four that made it through at the beginning. So the vast majority get conditional approval and get some questions coming back. And every year that I've been active with the DSP, which has been since two thousand and eight, we've always gotten some questions and some clarifications that need to be made. So, uh, it wasn't like they were taking a, a, a different look at us than they were anyone else. Um, I talked to someone from Arizona on the Rules and Bylaws Committee, also on the DNC X-Com and said, hey, come on, Luis, what's going on? Are you going to approve us or? And he said, of course, everybody who's got conditional, they're on their way. They, you know, the thing is they do want to approve. They do have to get by some questions. And then on the ranked choice voting, Missouri was very well prepared and very keen to use ranked choice voting, but they hadn't done it before. And so they were also not allowed to. They had about five or six high-level elected officials, mayors, and I don't know who else was there, that were all briefed, that were all ready to argue for using ranked choice voting. They didn't even let them testify. They just put them under that same category that we're in, that if you haven't used it before, you're not going to use it this year. Yep.
Right. Thanks, Katie.
And thanks to everybody who's working on the DSP. Complicated thing. It's nice when it's done.
A former chair would know that. Thanks, Katie. Uh, Steve, you're next.
Uh, thanks, Martha. Um, I just want to, uh, just put, so that we all recognize that I, I, and I respect, there's a, there's disappointment that, that the, they, they prevented us from using ranked choice voting. Um, but if I'm recalling correctly from our DSP, RCV would have only kicked in if we had a minimum of three petitions um, uh, out for signature. And to date, we only have two. So even if they had given us approval to proceed, um, we wouldn't have necessarily, uh, been giving that, uh, operating under RCV because we, we don't have those three petitions.
Until January third, though, so you never know.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm just at the moment though, but, you know, as I commented last week, if, if somebody on December fifteenth comes in and all of a sudden got a pivot, that could be interesting. But, uh, you know, at the moment, wouldn't have been triggered.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, don't see anybody else in the queue. Any last question?
Martha, I, I wanted to make, uh, I raised my hand a while ago. I wanted also to say welcome to Cory and Miguel and, and reiterate how great it is to have representation from the community on those two caucuses, AAPI and Hispanic. And also welcome Steve to his first meeting and Martha back and, but her first is Chair and Julia back. I wanted to note that we missed Ken. I missed Ken. Um, it was my first DNC meeting in seven years that Ken wasn't one of the partners that was there. Um, and also looking at who's on here, we missed you too, Art. And Connie, you're still missed. Oh, she's not on anymore. But, um, yeah, just wanted to throw that in. And we missed Joe Smallhoover. So Joe, um, yeah, we know that you were there for part of the meetings and in spirit. Um, but.
Yeah, thanks so much, Katie. Yeah, it really is great to have such ongoing involvement of, uh, of former DNC members, um, and just the great commitment that we have from leaders across all the organizations. Thanks for that, uh, that shout out. And it really was, it felt like a very complete delegation because we were represented on, on even more caucuses. So many, uh, you know, representations across those caucuses, um, which are such important relationships to develop, especially as the DNC will be hiring into its, um, into its staff for twenty twenty-four and will be ramping up all that constituency work that we can be connected in there in the best possible way. So thanks for that. Um, the queue being empty, um, I will just-
Julia has her hand up.
Oh, I, I was sorry, I was just gonna mention the Ethnic Council as well.
Great. Yes. I was gonna do that, but you go right ahead. And then Miguel, thanks.
No, you go. I just wanted to, because I thought that was part, it was so super, um, beyond the caucuses to also meet with, um, you know, we had that sit-down meeting with Jamie Harrison when we, during the world, the Ethnic Caucus, almost council, almost no one was there. And, uh, Steve and Martha and I and a couple of other people were in that meeting, talking to Jim Zagby. And, uh, Jamie Harrison came by and he sat down with us and spent twenty minutes brainstorming about how to do outreach uh, amongst, uh, communities, um, with, both in the United States and abroad. And it was a really great example and insight into how he thinks and also, um, you know, getting closer, as Martha said, to how we can work with communities all across, um, the United States because, and, um, in constituencies. I think there's just so many opportunities, as Martha has mentioned again, to, um, do that constituency outreach with the Biden campaign as we move forward. So lots of stuff to look forward to.
I'm just gonna throw a quick comment in there. When Julia says it was a small group, dude, she's, like, there was, like, seven, maybe seven or eight of us in that room, sitting down for that twenty-minute conversation with Jamie.
Yes. It was great. And, you know, Jim Zagby was like, that's the best, uh, council meeting I've ever, I've had in years. It was kind of fun.
That's great. Uh, Miguel, go ahead.
I just wanted to add something to Katie, to what Katie just said about the people who were there. Um, I was, you know, at the hotel bar and a guy comes out and asks me, hey, where's the guy from Serbia? He's really fun and funny. Uh, why isn't he here? And I said, oh, that's, that's Art. Um, but yeah, Art, we missed you. And we missed you having, you know, with your jokes. And it was, it's, it's, I hope to see you in Costa Rica next year. And by the way, I invited a lot of people to attend our meeting in Costa Rica. We'll see if they actually show up.
I think a lot, a lot said they were going to come. I, uh, Frank Leoni is coming, I think.
A lot of people invited themselves when they heard it was going to be in Costa Rica.
It's true. You're so right.
Even Jason Ray was ready to sign on.
Oh, I had, I didn't hear about that. That's hilarious.
That was out on the sidewalk.
Yeah, when I recognized, he was walking, so we were on the sidewalk and she was walking to the party. There, there was a farewell party for someone. Uh, I actually attended and I actually never knew who was the farewell party for. But, um, we were on the sidewalk and I was talking to Martha and Steve and oh my God, that's Jason Ray. So I went, went up and talked to him and that was really fun.
It was a nice inside view of what it's like to, uh, be the secretary and, you know, do the roll call of the states to, uh, at, at the convention. So that was, that was actually a really nice fun moment. So, yeah, I think those last couple of comments just show some of the kind of informal conversations, um, that can happen where we really actually learn about how things work from the inside and establish those relationships. And I'm sure that was really special for Jason Ray, also, uh, Miguel, um, having been a seventeen-year-old DNC member to meet one of our young DNC members. Um, I'm sure he can relate, um, at his first meeting. So thanks, uh, thanks for that. Um, yeah, just so in wrapping up, I was actually going to mention what, what Julia had just noted that we had, uh, in what was kind of an impromptu, uh, twenty-minute meeting, um, on our own with, uh, with Jamie Harrison and highlighted some of the opportunities to really get out into the international media. And he offered, um, he offered to be available for that and to, um, to be interviewed by Ashlet National, International Media, um, so that we can really get our message out in the press better. So that was a pretty golden opportunity, uh, with him. So that was also really a little bit fortuitous. Um, I want to thank everybody, um, for naming, uh, the opportunities and the next steps because of course we have a lot of work ahead of us. So thanks, um, so much to our DNC members for that. Um, and I also just wanted to mention another takeaway that we have from the, from the, um, from the meeting. We had an opportunity to meet on a couple of different ca, uh, occasions with the Voter Protection Team at the, at the DNC. So Reyna Walters-Morgan, um, was back again after her leave, as well as, um, as her, her Deputy Jake, who I worked together with on the ASDC Voter Engagement and Action Committee. It used to be called Voter Protection. It's now called Voter Engagement Action Committee, which is chaired by Yvette Lewis out of Maryland. Um, you know, that's a real great opportunity for us to do a couple of different things, um, also related to our DSP, that we're really demonstrating that we're doing everything we can to empower voters and get out the vote and make it possible for people to vote. So that's a committee where we're working, uh, both on developing trainings. So for smaller states that don't have voter protection programs, uh, providing training so that they can get that in place in their states. Um, but also to provide model legislation. And that's a great opportunity for us because it will be a platform for states to share with one another some of the best legislation that they have to enhance voting rights. And of course, that is one of the things that we're doing here at Democrats Abroad is we're making sure that the issues, um, that voters face, either if they've never resided abroad, um, and they're in one of the states that does not allow, uh, voters who have never, uh, citizens who have never resided to vote in their states. Um, whether it's about the ability to vote down ballot or any issue related to voting rights, we have examples of issues and we have examples of legislation and we're going to be able to get those out to all fifty plus one states through that committee. So that was another really important opportunity for us. And it was great to see, um, Reyna back and to meet with her team. Um, and, and I think the last thing I'll just say, this, this is again, the last DNC meeting before the twenty twenty-four Democratic National Convention. So Chicago, you know, here we come. Um, it was, uh, a really extraordinary opportunity to meet together. There's a lot of work that we will do in the meantime to maintain those relationships and empower all those states to work with us to get their voters and mobilize their voters who are abroad. Relational organization, Katie mentioned that as well, is really one of the great opportunities that we have in Democrats abroad to do that in reach into states. Everybody who lives in the United States knows somebody who is abroad. And they just don't know that they know somebody who's abroad until you really ask them the question. So relational organizing and also what we're calling in-reach, uh, via the state teams is going to be another really great mechanism that we can use to be able to get out the vote in twenty twenty-four. Um, so we have, um, a lot of opportunity ahead of us. Um, again, we have a great DNC team, uh, many great leaders of Democrats abroad, um, and volunteers. So I want to thank everybody uh, for joining us today and, um, look forward to what's ahead of us. Thank you.